All right, we're going to call the order of the Gladstone Planning Commission for Tuesday, June 18th, 2019. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Langston?
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Malachi? Commissioner Poole?
Here.
Commissioner Wentz? Commissioner Pat Smith?
Here.
Chair Rowlett?
Here. Let's lift the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hello, everybody, and welcome. Tonight, we are going to first do the consent agenda, and if any modifications, we'll modify that. And then, I was going to say that if any members of the public had anything they wanted to talk about prior to starting our regular agenda, but I think you guys are all with one of the projects, and I know everybody else, so we'll skip that. And to start the regular agenda, we'll do the monthly planning report, and then we'll do the public hearing, which is why you're here, and then we'll have a discussion about possible extension to time limits on approvals that we do, and then we'll do business from the planning commission. So, we'll start with the consent agenda. So, anybody have anything that want ... did we have any other correspondents? Okay. So, does anybody want to amend, or have a question?
Tammy, right at the very end, it says that I asked you for something that you were going to follow up on, and I wondered if you had.
Let's see.
It's right above business from the commission, last couple sentences.
So, that was in discussion, and that's what we're going to be discussing at item four.
Okay, perfect.
So, you want to hold off on that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as written.
Pat Smith?
I'll second.
Lieutenant Poole, Commissioners Pat Smith and Commissioner Lieutenant Poole. Let's take a voice vote, all in favor, say aye or yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no or nay. None opposed? That's done. And now, we'll do the monthly planning report. Ann, could you reintroduce yourself again, I'm sorry?
Oh, yeah. Elizabeth Dance, Clackamas County, representing Gladstone. I'm here for Melissa Erns today. The monthly plan report for the month of May, our customer service contacts were pretty standard. Our phone calls went up again, I think that's due to the fact that it's May, and people are starting to want to do stuff on their properties. There was no new building permits, no new pre-apps, and then there was four administrative decisions. The planning commission decision for the DeCana Nissan addition that was at last month's meeting was approved. The appeal period closes on that on the 19th. And then, there's the joint work session on housing code audits, no formal action is necessary. There was no pre-application conferences. There was a couple administrative permits. There was a property line adjustment off of Glen Echo, and that was a property line adjustment that was a replat of an existing platted lot to make it a little bit larger. And then, there was a floodplain development permit for the property on West Clackamas Boulevard for a concrete patio that was built in the floodway without permits. They went through all the environmental reviews required, including the engineering and the no rise assessment with a restoration plan. That's been approved, and we're waiting on the restoration plan on that. That's been in the works for about a year. And, as far as existing ongoing projects, there's been really no action on Cars Planet. The Cascadia planning for the multifamily apartment complex has changed in scope. We're just working with the applicant on what they want to do now. And then, we're today to hear talk about the expansion of the golf course.
Do we have any process in place for when we have, like Cars Planet, that isn't responding, or do they have to come before the planning commission again in order to ... is this application complete?
There is a timeline for completeness, and I believe it's 180 days, and so I'm not ... I'll check and see where they're at in their timeline. They're getting close. If they go past 180 days, their decision just expires. And so, then they no longer have an active decision. But I know Melissa's been in contact with them, trying to see what's happening, and it's just ... they're just need to bring in their landscape plan, I believe, and that's been difficult to get.
They need to do it, yeah. Not been very good about being comprehensive.
Just a clarification, can't they apply and extend that 180 days?
Not with a completeness issue, it's state law, so you have to get it complete within that timeframe, or say, make a decision at this point in time.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need action.
Anything else?
That concludes my presentation.
All right. So, now, we're going to have ...
We have someone, a motion to approve the planning report.
Uh, yeah, let's do that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the monthly planning report.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
I'll second.
And Commissioner Andrew Langston. Thank you, sorry about that.
No problem.
All those in favor, say aye or yes.
Aye.
Opposed, say no or nay. None opposed? Done. Now, we'll do the public hearing on file Z-0239-19-E, expansion of existing 1,600-square-foot legally non-conforming children's golf course clubhouse building, 19825 River Road, to include a 2,600-square-foot structural addition, landscaping and drainage improvements, and other minor site improvements. No change to hours or intensity of business operation is proposed by the owners. I'm not going to try those, some of those, and Orange Wall Studios, the applicants. So, tonight, I'm going to read the short version instead of that long one. "The public hearing is now open for the purpose of considering," I just read, "the procedure we'd like to follow tonight is: planning department report, applicant testimony, proponent testimony, opponent testimony, applicant rebuttal, decision to continue or close a hearing, planning commission discussion and decision. Now, does any commission member wish to disqualify himself or herself for personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight? Or does any commission member wish to report any significant ex parte or pre-hearing contacts? And also, if you have any bias or any conflicts of interest, report those at the same time. Please indicate if you had visited the site in connection with this application." Let's start with Commissioner Langston, and just go down the row.
I've been to the site, but no connection at all to this application.
No bias?
No bias.
Good.
No bias? Yes, I have been to the site, just drove around, and I have no ex parte.
And I have no ex parte contact, no bias, and I visited the site today.
Yeah, I too have had, I've been to the site, and I was there today. That was me taking a couple pictures, if you spotted me. I don't have any bias in this decision.
I have no bias in the decision, and I visited it Monday.
No ex parte contact?
No.
Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any commission member to hear this matter? Is there any member of the audience who wishes to question the justification of this body act on behalf of the city council on this matter? Oregon land use laws require that all issues be raised if the issues are not, are to be appealed. Failure to raise the issues at this hearing may invalidate the further appeal to Land Use Board of Appeals, Luba. Any party has the right to request a continuance to this hearing or an alternative to have their record left open for seven days. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the commission to respond to the issue will preclude an action for damages in circuit court. If you're going to testify, please try to address applicable criteria. Will staff please present the report?
Okay.
Thank you.
Tammy, is it ... I can't get it to ...
And if you guys want to get up and move around, stand, sit, make yourselves at home, do whatever you want. If you want to see the screen, yeah, you have to. We're pretty informal, we've got to stick to the law, but, you know, we don't mind if you move around.
You can almost see the site in that picture.
Yeah.
You're right.
You're right. So, today, we're here to discuss the alteration of non-conforming use applications, Z-0239-19-E. This is the project location. The project is, the site is about 19 acres. It's an existing nine-hole golf course, approved through a non-conforming use and design review in 1991, with a minor alteration in 2000. Today, we are looking at expanding the 1,600-square-foot legally non-conforming children's golf course clubhouse building to include an additional 2,600-square-feet structural addition, landscaping and drainage improvements, and other minor site improvements. No change to the hours of operation or intensity of the use of business operation is proposed. There's also, there's an addendum that you have in front of you that is to also add a storage facility that is about 960 square feet. We'll talk about that a little bit later as well. And that would be for storage during the time of construction, it would be used for a temporary facility for business operations. This is an overview of the project site. You can see, everything we're looking at is in the upper right corner of the screen, and then, the entire property runs down to the intersection of Meldron Bar Park, and then, comes around in near at the edge of the Clackamas River and Willamette River, where they intersect there. Public notice was sent out as required by code. Some comments were received from Water Environmental Services, WEF, the City of Gladstone Public Works, and Fire. All of their comments have been incorporated in the staff recommendation as conditions of approval. We'll talk about that a little bit later as well. This is just an aerial image of the site. This is kind of looking at from closest to us, at the bottom of the screen, is the area where the clubhouse is existing, and then, as you look down, you can see the golf course going down. There's been concern about parking at Meldron Bar Park in association with the driving range area that you can see farther, closest to the river on the property. This expansion is further up on the property, adjacent to River Road, and the parking required for the space is based on the square footage analysis, and there's 18 parking spaces required. This project is going to be removing one parking space, but with a total of 24 parking spaces provided, because they're going to be adding an additional ADA parking space to allow access to the property a little bit better, for the function of the golf course and education facilities. This is kind of a zoom-in overview of the existing proposal, so this is kind of the existing clubhouse with the star on top of it, and then, the parking area is that whole area included in this frame. You see the yellow area at the bottom of the screen, kind of coming in, there's those two spaces off to the right, and then, as you come around, all of that parking there is the parking for the clubhouse facility and education facility. And then, so this is existing, and then, this is kind of the proposed floor plan. You can kind of see the expansion is going to be surrounding the building to the, around the back of it, and you can kind of see it goes out to the sides. On the right-hand side of the screen is going to be where the office spaces are going to be, and then, on the left-hand side of the screen is going to be the expansion for interactive education facilities to allow all of the actions that are happening there now with the education facility to be happening on a year-round basis and have an indoor access as well. The storage facility, there'll be the temporary staging area, and this image is proposed on the far right of the screen. The applicant will discuss where they might be relocating that tonight, and then, we'll look at maybe adjusting the decision so we have it in the appropriate location before this decision is finalized. And that would be for a temporary facility for office space and employee space during the construction of the facility, and then, after construction is completed, that would be for a 12-month temporary use. And then, after the construction of the facility is completed, it would be converted just to storage, so there would be no business operations, there'd be no offices, there'd be no people in there, it would just be a storage facility, no expansion of the actual education center and office space. When you look at the alteration of a non-conforming use, there isn't, the standards that are required are that the use as it's proposed is not going to be creating a significant adverse impact as it's proposed. The applicant, in their narrative provided, that they're not looking to be expanding hours of operation. They currently run seven days a week from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. They have seven employees and run, their education facility is for people under the age of 18, and so, they would be keeping those same programs and just having more space to kind of allow those programs to run more fluidly, so not looking to increase the function itself. Here, you can kind of see that expansion area. I don't know, my laser pointer never works, but I keep thinking it might. Over on the left, over here, this is the office area that's going to be kind of expanded out. This is about 595 square feet on this side for the seven employees and volunteers' office space. And then, you come around to the middle, and in the middle of the building, this is pretty much staying the same with the expansion off to the back, to allow better access through the site. And then, off to the left is going to be kind of a big, open space that's going to be for education facilities and just kind of learning, golfing, that kind of general activity that happens at the golf course. Also, there's golf cart parking proposed. Currently, I understand there's some kind of charging stations, but not very well organized, and so, this will kind of create a better, more fluid charging place for golf carts to charge and be recharged and be taken in and out in a more orderly fashion. And this is kind of an overview of the landscape plan. You can see here, there's landscaping kind of coming in around the parking area, and this is the addendum that you have in front of you, just came in today, so this landscape plan doesn't have the idea of the storage facility and temporary office outlet area. These are some renderings, so this would be coming from the parking lot, walking in. To the left, you see that larger facility that would be for education facilities, and then, off to the left would be the office space. And this is a view from the golf course side coming in. You get a better idea of what that kind of education facility is going to be coming in, and just kind of the bigger, open area there. The staff recommendation is to approve this product with the five standard conditions and 11 special conditions of approval. All the conditions of the 1991 conditional use and design review are still in play. The landscape plan shall be designed, shall be installed as provided. With this proposal, staff found that because parking has been an issue, there is removal of one total parking space, which would be added of the ADA parking space, that the bike parking standards outlined in the municipal code would apply. This would require the addition of two bike parking spaces. We are increasing the ADA access. The applicant is currently working with the Fire Department to make sure that all of the distances and separation standards that are required will be met, and that's prior to approval, prior to building permit approval. Public Works, the applicant's also working with Public Works and Water Environmental Services to make sure all conditions of approval are met there. Any development that includes coverage of more than 5,000 square feet of surface area requires a drainage and erosion control plan to be done, and the applicant is currently working on that with WEF and Public Works. And then, the accessory building for long-range storage and temporary use, a statement of use is required to make sure that that building doesn't become an additional space for the education facility and is just used for storage. So, a statement of use that it'll be a temporary use for 12 months and then converted to storage only in the future is the condition that's required as a condition of approval. Staff recommendation approval. And that concludes my presentation. Please, if you have any questions, let me know.
So, could you just kind of go over the addendums that we have?
Yeah.
And tell us what the difference is between that and what was in the packet?
Yeah, so, the biggest thing is that the packet that you received was just for the expansion of the 2,600-square-foot clubhouse, all in the main facility, with the removal of the ADA parking space. Earlier today, the applicant reached out to me and said they wanted to add an additional 960-square-foot building to be used for future storage of just like accessory equipment and stuff that they would need to store on the property, incidental uses for the education facility, I would imagine. And so, that building wasn't included in the original submittal, and so, the addendum is addressing that building. There's a statement from the applicant about what they would want to use the building for, with the idea of that being a temporary building for office and facility uses during the time of construction. And so, that's the addendum you have in front of you, and then, in the addendum, it kind of outlines ... Hold on, two pieces of paper in front of me. All the sections of the decision where the language would be included to talk about not only the addition of the building, but the expansion, not only the expansion of the building, but also the space with the conditions required around it for the 12-month facility use with the permanent use of a storage facility. And so, I kind of call out, I think it's on page, the initial project description, I added it into there, and then, it's included in some of the findings as well, and then, in the condition of approval, condition 10 was added because it wasn't in the original proposal, so the condition 10 was added with the statement of use being required. And then, there's a site plan there, and then, the applicant will come up and talk about it. I believe they're altering the site plan. They worked with Mike Funk at the Fire Department, and the proposed location didn't meet fire standards to get the right distance they needed, and so, they proposed to relocate that, so the plan will be changed again to meet fire standards, so the building will probably be moved over. Maybe I knew that in my narrative, because I had my east and west transposed in my narrative, and so, it will actually be moved over to the west side, east side of the property.
Liz, excuse me, I have a question. I'm not sure whether it should be for the applicants or for you. But we're going to lose one parking space. Is it going to become an ADA parking space, or are we going to lose one, are we going to lose two parking spaces with one of them becoming an ADA parking space?
So, one total space will be lost. It's going to kind of create, and let me see, I think it's in, you can kind of see it in, where's the plan? So, here, you can kind of see, there's the striping in the ADA space on the left, and then, there's another ADA space on the right. To add that striping, you kind of remove one parking place there. With the square footage of this site, the required parking would be 18 spaces, and so, they have 25, and there will be 24, so they're above the required parking for the development, so they are losing one.
How many do we have today? How many parking spaces?
25.
25.
There will be 24.
None of them are ADA?
One ADA.
There is one now?
And there will be two.
Then, we're going to go to two, and we'll still have how many net parking spaces to include the ADA spaces?
24.
So, okay, got it. Thank you very much.
Are those designated parking spaces, like they say for the course, or can residents at the apartments utilize a space too?
My understanding is that it's an exclusive agreement for the people that use the golf course, but the applicant might be better to speak about that.
I think there's a sign.
My understanding is that it doesn't, it's hard to enforce, is my understanding. If you guys want to come up, you can.
We do have signs that are both going to say golf course parking, 7 to 7, but just as a goodwill gesture, we do let the apartment residents park there. We do put certain times when we have an event, or we know a larger group is going to be there, then we put out signs and stuff, but we do everything we can to work with the apartments, because we know that they're limited in their space.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Anything else from the commission? Any questions about the staff report at this point? And applicant, and/or their representative is present, and would you like to add anything to the staff report?
We want to see, briefly, this on plan, and unfortunately, one copy. I can take around a minute, but so.
Going from here to here, right?
Right. So, the current location, we're showing you that is here.
Yeah.
And so, our proposed is along with itself, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Fire, I was wrong in the minutes, and we'll provide access. You can also email this to the success department.
Got it. It's going to be here?
Correct. This is the proposed.
The south end. Okay, great, thank you.
Could you just give your name and address real quickly, and then, so, for the record, we can say that we saw the map, and ...
Name and address.
You can just give your name and who you represent.
Who you represent, yeah.
Damien Huffman with Orange Wall Studios.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that was for, we looked at the map, the altered map that's going to be emailed later. Anything else from the applicants? Any questions of the commission? Any more questions that you'd like to ask the applicants?
I don't have any.
I imagine some of the apartment residents are going to be happy about that storage unit. I think those are all like their back patios, looking out to the golf course, or they might be happy because they'll shield them from incoming balls.
It's our goal to, and with the design of the expansion of the clubhouse, but also with, we know that this proximity is an issue with parking being an issue with the extension of that, that our goal is with the design to, using landscaping to, you know, to, so it's not an obstruction, so it's not something that visually, a kind of malatross, I think to become a bit appealing.
For sure, yeah.
All right. Now's the time for public testimony, and we have none. Now's the time for the applicant rebuttal, and since there was no questions or testimony, there won't be any. Mike, is there anything you want to go over? Mike Funk?
Just that I had a couple of concerns originally about the placement. I've worked with Mr. Huffman, and I am satisfied with what the resolution that we've come to. We're still going to work hand in hand, and I have no doubt that that's going to be successful when we ever work it out. So, I have no issues. Access water supplies has, my concerns have been resolved.
Good. So, for the record, Fire Marshal Funk is good with working with applicant on any issues, that they'll be resolved. I guess we're at the end of this thing, eh? So, if there's no further testimony, I will entertain a motion to either close the public hearing or continue it to a date certain. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move that we adjourn the public hearing, so we can discuss it.
Want to close it or adjourn it? I guess it's the same thing, eh?
Close it, yeah.
Natalie Smith, Commissioner Smith made a motion to close the public hearing.
Second that.
And Commissioner Lieutenant Poole is going to second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no or nay. None opposed, so the public hearing is now closed, and so, we can deliberate now. Deliberation. Anybody want to deliberate?
Well, just a couple of comments. The design and the constraints that you're working with there look like they're well-thought-out. You've got a tight fit there, and you're trying to make something new out of something old, so I know it's pretty challenging, and my only concern would be the color of this storage.
And my only concern would be the color of this storage building. And you already addressed the aesthetics. You know, we want our neighbors to be happy, and so I don't need to reiterate that, 'cause you've already indicated a sincere, you know, direction there. And I will just close by saying, you're hearing a lot about parking. And hopefully in the future, we won't be hearing about parking problems down there. And if we, you know, if we do, it doesn't affect today's decision. But Gladstone's growing, and this issue of parking and access is becoming a real hot potato here. So it's nothing personal. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question too. When's your expected...
The public hearing's closed now.
Okay. I don't have a question anymore.
We're deliberating. We can open the public hearing again if you wanna take testimony.
But we can ask staff, can't we?
Well, they might have an answer.
Yeah, you can ask staff questions.
I pass.
Okay, then I'll ask it. Is there any estimated... Are you aware of any estimated completion date?
No. The one thing that is kind of a hand in hand thing is that the temporary facility to be used for like office auxiliary space is only allowed for 12 months. And so from the time permits were to get issued, once they figure out all the pieces in place before they can get their permits issued, they would have a year.
Okay.
Anybody want to...
Thank you very much, yeah.
Anything else? Any motions to approve the...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve application number Z-0239-19-E.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
I second it.
Commissioner... Also Smith. And...
I noticed there's a...
He just noticed something.
Conflict between the application number at the top and the number listed in the summary.
Remember, we got addendums for this.
Oh, okay.
Because there were errors.
So what is the right form?
So in the... Well, so the addendum does say 19-E.
Yeah.
But in the summary below, it says 19-E.
Yeah, I'll correct that for sure. I think there's a typo that says "flat" instead of "plan," farther at the back of the decision as well. And I will update that. There's also, my north, south, east, west is a little circling in the decision, and I will rectify that throughout this decision rendering.
Do we need to amend the motion, do you think?
I think he said the right name. I think...
He said E.
He said E.
Patrick said E.
I wasn't paying that close attention. All right, are we ready for a vote? Please call a roll.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Chair Rowlett?
Yes. Motion passes, and the application is approved. It's good for one year. So if you think it's going to take longer than a year, you should come at about month nine at the latest to ask for an extension. We're working on making this easier right now. The planning commission has to approve your extension. And so if you come like the day before, it's not gonna happen. You'll have to reapply, and you know how expensive that is. So about month nine. I noticed in the... In this, you know, old stuff that was at the back of the packet, that they sent letters way back when, the first time this came through, saying, you know, it's been approved, and if you don't do this within a year, you need to do this at this timeframe and stuff. So be very aware of that, 'cause we've had a problem with that. So thank you, congratulations. We're anxious to see it. It's a cool place. Hard to find. So I haven't been down there in about 50 years.
Is this pro... I'm sorry, go ahead.
And it was like, I was a little like, where is this? I was going down to the, you know, park down there and stuff. So it was a little hard to find off a river road, 'cause the GPS is like mixing me up. Yeah. But thank you.
It thinks it's a multifamily with the zoning, you know, it's looking for a building.
We used to mess around down there a lot and pick up golf balls and stuff when we were kids. But then the apartment buildings weren't there, and it was a big golf course, you know, bigger. But that's a nice place, yeah.
Eighteen holes.
Oh, crazy. That park down there, all that stuff down there is where there's abandoned houses and all that stuff down there.
Yeah.
Is Duncan Campbell still associated with the children's course? Excellent. Excellent.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you, we're excited too. Thank you.
Yeah, we're looking forward to that free golf day. Teen, right?
Excludes us.
Midnight golf.
Yeah, midnight golf.
Midnight golf for the old people.
Actually, you can do... There is golfing, but they have balls that...
Glow in the dark.
Kinda glow in the dark.
Yeah, yeah.
Cosmic golfing.
I think that would be awesome.
I think somehow he does it, the one over there.
All right. Now we're going to discuss item number four, which is continued discussion of possible changes to extension compliance time limits in the municipal code. Have you guys all had a chance to look at that?
I did not.
Two years.
Is it in the book?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very way at the back.
It's back past this application, which by the way, the letter, if you see this letter here, March 20th, 1990, and they talk about... How long it takes for the planning commission to get this stuff? So that's towards the end of the packet. And then the regular agenda continues. And then we have the discussion of the time extensions for design review. So Tammy, kinda tell us what you've done here. I'm assuming it was you that did this?
Yeah, based on the last meeting on May 21st, I just briefly did a review of the City of Oregon City, Westland, and Milwaukee's code, because we were looking at possibly condensing all into one section. And so I've done that. That's at the end of your packet there, the excerpts from each of those regarding code language. And then also added the language requesting the extension must be submitted the 90 days prior to expiration, as we discussed at the last meeting.
So this stuff in red, the parts that are in red are the changes. If we wanna ask city council to... Or we want to submit to city council our thoughts on changing the code. This would be the part where we extend the design review part to two years. And then the rest of these are like other parts of the code that would stay one year.
So again, I'm not sure if you are wanting to put that in each of those, you know, the final plat, the time limit, or if you are looking to condense that all into one section. But we would have to make those... If you're wanting to extend that two years into the other sections of the code, we'd have to address that as well. Or you would have to decide if you were wanting to make a separate section.
So what do you guys think, the stuff in yellow? Would you wanna leave it at one year, or would you like it to be two years?
It looks like our neighbors are mostly at two years. And I think it makes sense to the construction industry to be somewhat common with our neighbors. My comments in the past, I'll just repeat them briefly, and that is, you never know what's coming down the road. And what I mean by that is sometimes you have a really rough winter, you have snow. We have flood events. You know, sometimes Glen Echo shut down for five, six weeks. Well, if you happen to be the person that's working around there, it can really get in the way. So also sometimes when you're working on a project, financing gets hung up, the economy changes. So I just think while we really wanna get things done quickly, and everybody always shoots for it to get done in a year, I know from my own experience that a lot of things take a year and a half. So I really think not only should we... The biggest reason for us to do this isn't really to be in agreement with our neighbors as much as it makes more sense. And I really think that anyone that doesn't get it done in two years, and then shows up at the last day when it's gonna expire, or shows up and they're frustrated, well, they've had two years to complete it, and there's no reason for us to go any further or feel like we haven't given them ample time. So I just think that the two years makes sense, even though we don't wanna invite folks to start a project, let it sit for six months, and then get back at it. So it can be a little bit of a double edged sword, but I really think we should go with the two years.
I agree with that. I don't wanna see us go to three like Westland does. That's, I think, too much.
And just to clarify, for land use decisions, it's not...
Right.
It's for building permit issuance, not final. And so the land use decision, the building permit needs to be issued. It isn't that the project is done, just that they need to come in, apply for their building permits, and have them issued to be an exception.
I stay project, and I actually...
And be ready to move forward and start building.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Good.
So yeah, so once the approval's done, if they don't get their building permit within that year... And it takes, you know, like in that letter that I was pointing out in the back of the one for the children's golf course.
Back in the 90s.
It explains, you know, they actually sent a letter out, Jonathan Block did. And they say, you know, very specifically what you need to do. And I think we've lost some of that. We don't send a letter. What kinda thing do you send to the... Do you send something similar to that?
In the decision, we include the language of like, this is going to... This will expire within this amount of time. We put the dates in. And it's like in the first page of the decision is where that language sits, so...
We had a brief discussion about that, and I thought we talked about adding or modifying that language a little bit to where... I don't recall specifically, but we'd like, if you don't... If you're not done, if you're not gonna make your deadline, file an extension 90 days prior. I don't remember the rest of the conversation. But there was a little talk about changing that or beefing that language up. Am I...
Without a code support of that, that's hard language to put in a decision as a standard. So we need to have the code to support it, to put it in the decision as...
Is that what you're talking about, is a code amendment?
Well, I'm talking about your actual notice.
Right.
Yeah, and when we talked about it, there was just a brief discussion of clarifying that language.
Yeah.
And making it more...
So did you see the language in red?
Yeah, yeah. So I just wanna make sure this is the same thing we're talking about.
Yeah.
So this first part, the stuff in red, I think, you know, we worked on that a little bit. I think this, the second part here, the one year part, we should say we would like to see that be two years. And then on the time limit, it says, planning commission may be renewed once by planning commission. We should change that to the city administrator designate, I think, to make it easier to get these things done in an administrative way. I don't think the plan... You know, that's another thing that would hold things up is like the time limit on adjustments. It's already got the city administrator or designate. And it says his, but I guess that's pretty standard, right? Instead of his or her.
Yeah, I mean, you can... You could clean that up too while you're at it, but... So just to clarify though, so the revisions that were brought to you tonight have specific language to be, you know, forwarded to the council for their consideration regarding design review. And that get, that's that language in red, and it talks about how ultimately any request, no matter if it has to go to the city administrator or the planning commission, must be submitted to the city administrator at least 90 days prior to the expiration date. Do you wanna have that similar approach to all of these? Or is that just for design review applicants?
Well, we... The reason we have the rest of this here is because we talked about some of the stuff overlapping and being confusing. We'd like to be consistent all the way through.
Yeah, I probably wasn't being very clear. Do you wanna make it so whether it's a plat, you know, expiration, and they wanna renew, or a conditional use, whatever the approval might be, do you wanna have it such that they have to turn in that request 90 days in advance of the expiration? Or is that just for design review?
I think we should...
I was a little unsure about when I was...
I mean, it's your call. It doesn't... I just wanna be sure that we're...
I think we should have it for everything personally.
To be consistent, I agree.
And just be consistent across the board that...
Left confusion.
I... Are some of these things, can they be done like in 10 minutes?
That's my question.
I wouldn't think so.
What's the process for...
The problem, I think, that we're trying to get to is where, you know, we had a couple of these expire, and they're really mad because they came in what they thought was in plenty of time. And that we couldn't process it.
Right. Well, the other thing you can do, I mean, I guess this maybe gets to the next question, 'cause I wasn't sure about this. In most instances and jurisdictions we work with, the burden on the applicant is to simply get the request in before the expiration, not that it receive approval before the expiration. Does that make sense?
Right. It does, but we've had two situations recently where they were not able to get the... Get anything changed, and they did come in before the expiration.
Right, so I'm saying the standard can be written where you're saying, all you need to do is get it, the request in before it expires, not that you need to have the request approved before it expires. So if you get it in before it expires, then the time it takes for the city to process it is the time it takes the city to process it. Now, it could be denied.
But doesn't it go past the year if you get it in and it's not taken care of until after the year's expired?
Well, there's a slight gap, sure. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is it sort of encourages the jurisdiction to process the extension, you know? You'd be... It's a thought. I mean, that's the way it works in most of the jurisdictions we work with. I mean, if there's a real concern about wow, then something could last for another six months, maybe it is wise to have something that says basically, you gotta get this in with plenty of time, so we have plenty of time to, you know, to review it.
My comment about lining up with our neighbors has more to do with the outside than it has to do with us. 'Cause if you're a plumbing contractor, there's a good chance you're working in Oregon City and Westland and here. And, you know, if you're a sheet rock contractor, and all these various building trades. Langston, Mr. Langston probably knows this way better than me. But, you know, they're not isolated in one little community. And if they're playing by the same rules everywhere, it just makes it easier, it would seem to me, for them too.
Yeah.
I'm kind of a... I've always had this feeling that we need to be vigilant about what things... When things are... What we grant to be done. But once it's done, we should advocate for these people and not be in their way. We should do everything we can to help them get things done, once it's approved. And not to have little impediments in the way. So the more that we sweep out of the way in conjunction with our surrounding neighbors, the better off everybody's gonna be in that. This is my opinion.
I think that was kind of what was discussed, with the idea of having it be that it's... That the time extension is applied for prior to expiration, instead of being time extension is approved prior to time of expiration to give... 'Cause if you say 90 days, you're cutting that year approval down to if you're not gonna get it through building and issued, you're cutting your year down to nine months.
Yeah.
And so instead of having it be decided...
I think what happened with those... I don't know, I haven't been part of this discussion, so I apologize. My memory might be wrong. I thought what happened with a couple of those, or at least one, was that... So in this interim period, you've been adding conditions that basically say, you know, the approval is good for one year unless, you know, an extension is renewed... Is granted within that time. Something that really made it pretty clear that the extension had to be done within the year. And to me, I think what's more common and probably maybe a little bit fairer to applicants would be to say, this is good for a year unless you want an extension. And if you do want an extension, then you've gotta get that in before your permit expires. That much is true. But you don't need to get the extension approved.
So for Milwaukee, it says an extension application must be submitted and approved prior to the expiration date of the approval. So I think what the issue is... And ours is the same, you know, similar language, that it had to be submitted and approved. But it said the planning commission had to do that.
Right, and getting it on your docket.
You know, getting it on the agenda and stuff like that. Well, the... You know, getting it on the agenda and stuff like that. Well, the, you know, in the old days, in 1990, it was, uh, they're saying, you know, three months ahead, which is kind of really what it would take.
Right.
You know.
Yeah.
All parties involved, yeah.
It's fine to do it this way, totally.
But I think what we, what our intentions are is to make it easier to get those extensions by giving that, instead of the planning commission, giving it to the city administrator or their designate to approve those things. But they still need to be approved prior to the expiration, I believe, because that's what Milwaukee does and I think, to me, I think that they should, it should be approved before it expires, any modifications.
Yeah, but also, also, right now is applying that you just need to get it in.
Milwaukee, Milwaukee also says, you know, you can't turn it in more than six months too, so. I don't know if that's something worth considering, like, you know, don't turn it in right after we approval. We approve it, you know, because you know you're going to kick the can down the road.
Right.
Do we know if, um, city administrator vets is comfortable with doing that?
That's my question.
She, she is good with that.
Okay, good. You've already discussed it?
Yeah.
She's aware of, of the proposed changes.
And she really wanted us to take, take a look at this because, you know, it's hell for staff to have to go through this stuff when you have somebody screaming at you, you know, in this little building that we have here. Everybody in the whole building can hear what's going on and, and I've been here when people have complained and it's embarrassing sometimes.
So, so just to be clear, for me, if nobody else, okay? So what we want is a requirement that you submit your request at least 90 days prior and that the request be approved prior to expiration.
I don't know that I'm really, I don't know if that 90 day thing is, should be required. I don't know.
All I'm, the reason I'm asking is just so when, because we're going to do this in other sections. I just want to be sure we don't come back and you're like, that's not at all what we.
I think that we have to have some kind of time on there, but I think by making it easier to have these approvals done, I don't think it's necessarily have to be 90 days because the planning commission is not going to have to have a hearing about it.
And the applicant will know, if you're clear about it in the language, I think I'd probably add something even to 8100 on this, that it's the approval of the request that's critical, not just the submission of the request. So, you know, if that's clear, then they can, big boys and girls such as they are, determine, well, here's why I need to get this in based on what my project's doing.
Well, I think they do, some of the other people mentioned, and in these other letters, they said, you know, you should submit it by this date, you know, give it so much time for non-significant, you know, just renewal of the application as was or as is. Any modifications will require that the planning commission approve those. So, you know.
But that's also different than just extending what they started with, so you made that real clear.
Yeah, so if it's not, and I think that, you know, there's language in there somewhere that says, you know, that it's submitting the application as, as was or is, as is.
Original or however you'd say.
Right. Extend the original application, but any significant mod, any modifications may require the planning commission to approve it. And I think in that case, it has to be 90 days for sure. I don't know exactly. I think the planning commission for sure, I think we want to make, be consistent with two years across the board, correct? And I think that, you know, we should come up with what we think is best practice for the rest of it to make, make it easier for the administrator or their designate to do some of these approvals that are easy to do and they maybe could do it in a day.
As long as there's no changes.
Yeah, it's as submitted. So I don't know what the best language for that would be necessarily, but I think that, you know, we've talked about this like three times now. I want to submit to the city council to get this changed before we go too much farther down the road.
And I think as long as we're addressing original applications here, um, there's no reason to complicate it. It's a completely different can of worms when somebody comes up and says, oh gee, we're going to build a bigger water treatment plant or we're going to build a bigger this, or we're going to change it all. Because that's where a lot of the concern comes from the past where major changes got approved by staff or someone, but we're not talking about that. We're talking about more of a administrative thing. And I agree with Cheryl Roulette, um, you know, let's just keep it simple and, and keep it as consistent with everyone else as possible.
So one of the other things you could consider then is, you know, the other policies speak to this somewhat. They use the language significant, which can get you into all sorts of trouble, based on what you're talking about. But to me, usually, someone gets an approval, um, and then they want to come back and, and do something different.
Like the shed or something.
Well, but yes, but after the approval.
Maybe they show up a month from now.
After, after the approval, I mean, if it's something beyond pretty obvious, like we're going to put an ADA parking from here to here, or a bike rack from there to there, usually most, most clients say that's, you got to reapply because that's going to take staff time to look at. Presumably they got to develop a staff report for you. Policy question entirely, but I think, you know, how you go about that to avoid the problem maybe you're describing, Commissioner Poole, which was, wow, staff might have looked at it and thought, that's pretty innocuous. We can just do that in the, in the service of like, let's help people out, right? Let's just get them, we don't need to come back. Other people could look at it and say, that's a big change. We, we would have wanted to see that. Where you draw that line, everybody's going to have a different take on that. So one way to handle it is just to say, well, if you change it, you basically have to go.
I think that's right. I think it needs to be as submitted.
Yeah. If there's any change at all, then it has to come before us.
It's easy to press the easy button. It has to be the same thing. Otherwise, they have to resubmit their application, alterations and stuff have to be approved by the planning commission. That's what I think. And I think the commission agrees.
I, yeah, I definitely agree with that.
I agree with that.
Has to be the same thing, otherwise they have to go through the process.
And if you get late in the game and you're making major changes, it's a different project now. That's been my experience.
Pammy, I think that question I asked during the consent agenda related to this, do you see any reason why city administration would not want to do what we're talking about to approve things that came in for extension that had no changes made to the original?
I don't foresee an issue, but I'm assuming our city administrator would probably follow up or whoever they designate, it might be through the planning staff.
Right.
But I don't, and I know David had more conversation with our city administrator today. He might have more.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I didn't get anything from.
We're suggesting somebody do something without actually having to ask.
I think that one discussion I had with her, she was like wanting me to get this figured out.
One thing to keep in mind is that there will be a cost for a time extension, no matter what, because there still needs to be a renotice and a re, the open comment period, the 15 days, just going to still be there. So the staff needs to reissue the decision and there's still the mailing cost. And so there is a, a cost to that.
Okay, so let's get all that in there. So we need a draft put together for the city council. So who's going to do that?
I mean, I can work, I can work with you and get it done.
Yeah, we can get that taken care of.
So I think we all understand what we all want, right?
And we want two years throughout for everything, for all the places where it's one, we want it to be two.
And unless there's any changes, the city administrator or designate would be able to approve the extension. And we want to make it clear that within a timeframe of at least 60 days that they, if there's changes or.
Yeah, if there's changes, you want to change that to 60 from 90?
I don't know. What do you think? Should we leave it 90 for changes? Because it's going to be, well, if it's a new, whole new application, it's going to have to be 90 days.
Yeah. Yeah, they're changing it anyway.
If it's a new application, does the, does the deadline even matter then?
That's the thing. If you get a new application, you're going to get a new deadline.
Well, that was, with today's application, the conversation was that they were going to add that storage facility, temper facility, they would have to come in with a new designer view to do that if we didn't get it in and talk about it tonight because it was different than what we approved.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the conversation would be a whole new designer view to look at this separately. And so if it's going to be altered in any way, they're going to have to come in for a new application.
If they showed up in three months, it's completely different than what happened today.
Yeah, I, what, what we were just talking about is another, not, not as part of this, I realize you want to get this part done. Another thing you could, you could consider in the future, a lot of codes have language that will break out a minor and a moderate, minor and a major modification. And so, you know, they'll classify it. Like if you're just going to be doing this, this, or this, that's something we can do at the staff level. The fee for it is reduced. But, you know, if you're going to do this, this, or this, um, you know, generally that requires a new application.
Yeah, I think we need to get this done, so let's.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not suggesting you do.
Still think it needs to be amended.
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying you do that now. I'm saying for the future.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So we're taking it from one year to two years now?
For land use, yeah.
Design re, yeah.
For land use.
Land use decisions, yeah.
Design review, approval.
Okay, so like the folks that are, are, the first team, what kind of decision is this? Is this a land use?
This is, this is a land use decision, but the code hasn't been amended yet, so it's good for one year. The designer view decision is good for one year.
Basically, anything that comes out of the planning commission, Mike, would be good for two years.
Instead of one.
Is that what everybody else around us is doing? Because staff wise, that's a really long time. And you talk about the time it takes to go back through and look at a set of plans, find the set of plans. Oh, they want to do an extension. The time, because it's been a year.
It's been two years.
Now you have to go back and find what they did. If they, if they're doing something different, then it's not that big a deal because then they're going to send you a whole package again. But just trying to find everything. I've got so many, the Glen Echo project, to this project, to that project, there's a lot of stuff in Little Gladstone that's going on. Maybe I'm the only department that feels this way.
You and I talked about that a little bit and I agreed with you, you know, what you're saying. The problem is they really only have nine months to do, to get their, you know, after they got their permit, to get started. So the, you know, and everybody else like, um.
Well, they have to go, they have to go, from, from this point, they're, they're going to leave here and they have to go get their drawings all put together. You know, what we're looking at is just like, oh hey, this is beautiful. But now they got to figure out how you're going to connect that glue lamp to this column, you know, how you're going to build it. They got to get all that stuff put together. Uh, and then they have to go into permitting and then they got to get, they have to get reviewed through permitting. They're going to get comments back. They got to go back and redo their drawings some more, work on easements and things like that, and then go back in for review. You know, that, that year gets burnt up pretty quick.
And some.
They get permits to start groundbreaking and.
Yeah, that's true. If they break it out, yeah.
Yeah, but sometimes, Mike, they even, you know, like if you buy it, like if I bought that place across the street, it might be contingent on, you know, I'm going to come to the planning commission and get my plans and then I still don't have the financing, but I'm going to, I'm not going to go for the financing unless I get, you know, the plans I want approved. So just because they're approved doesn't mean anything's going to happen. But I can't get financing until I get my plans approved. Then I get financed. That all takes a long time. So then by the time I go to get all the permits and stuff, I'm way out of time.
Yeah.
Well, let me say thank you for the chance to say, I understand that you guys have spent time on this and have researched and come to the decision that you have and it's.
Yeah, everybody else.
But it is. So if it's the world that we live in and it sounds like, you guys have best business practices in mind.
Well, and.
I absolutely support that.
And we appreciate, you know, what you're saying for sure. And I had thought about that a lot at daily talk. But, um, you know, when the rest of the people around you, like your three years or two years and we're the only one year one, that's kind of makes us stick out a little bit and, and take a look at it. But I do appreciate, and I know everybody here does, especially all the stuff you have to do. It's impossible to be able to keep up with all that.
The juggling sometimes.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to ask you, just for my own edification, it's in no way a, a challenge of any kind, but if nothing changes, if they just get an extension for one more year, what, what does that entail for you in terms of additional work?
I need to go back and look and see what's changed in that area in a year. There's a lot of change that happens up on Webster Ridge with apartments and the time it takes them to build that and approval and, and then they have a pre-application, oh, now we want to build more apartments.
No, that would be a different, different program and a new, but just an extension. I've, I've got a permit or I've got an approved plan for a year to do this. And financing or whatever doesn't, is going to stall me, so I come back for an extension. And you've already approved what I want to do and I'm not going to change anything.
Let me give you a first world example. Bob Blackmore, we're on 82nd Avenue. Bob Blackmore had to do an extension because he ran up against his time and his window, thought he was ready to pull the trigger. He's ready, he sets it in front of his architect and the architect goes, oh, no, 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 you don't want this. Here, you want to design this fire department, turn around. And it was ridiculous and it didn't come anywhere close to meeting.
But that would be then an example of where we would say, sorry, we can't, we can't approve that extension. You'd have to, you'd have to reapply.
And he did. That one came back.
Yeah, he came back, that came. Two, three months ago.
Yep. To the commission again. And they had that lot for, or the whole thing for sale. I think somebody else bought it in the meantime or something too. Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I talked to Bob fairly recently.
Oh, did you?
It was after he got his extension that he came in to me and said, I have this other idea.
Oh, that was after that?
After that. And so that's what causes me, a year ago, we approved it, stuff like that. Then they're coming in because they got their extension. If he'd have come in 18 months after he first came to you guys, where I put it to bed, it's filed and moved on, it takes that staff time to look it up.
Well, he can't change, well, he can't really change that now.
Well, and, and he didn't because I said, there's no way that I'm, I minimalized, minimally approved the original one. It was stretching the envelope. And he wanted to change it, shorten it up. And I said, there's, there's no way we can do this. But yes, it would have caused a retrial.
Yeah, so I remember that because you had, you had said, you had to prove that whole thing. We kind of left a little gray area there, I think, on that one. But that's, you know, things do change for sure, so that's a good point.
I think you guys are on the right track though, because if you have years in some other places, you know, and Gladstone's got 12 months, it certainly makes sense to, I think, follow best business practices.
If it was only, if it was really 12 months, I think that might be okay, but it's really not. It's more like nine.
Thank you. Sorry for the time.
No, no, I appreciate that you said something.
Any and all input is appreciated.
Well, I think of our own city hall project, and of course, that's, that's a big special animal with the police station and everything. But, you know, if we ran into a little delay or whatever, you know, that starts a chain of things that create other delays and the next thing you know, it's freezing, it's winter out, you can't pour concrete. So then there's another three weeks. And so our project's going great down there, but it's also a learning experience to, to watch it and see how the clock goes and how close to our own schedule we stay and, and where we're at in the end. So, um, we don't have any problems down there. I didn't mean to imply that, but it's, it's right in front of us and it's a perfect example of where it's a design build and that's a great place to learn, isn't it?
Yeah.
So we know where we're going on this one?
I think we're good.
Yeah, I just want to make one clarification. Um, if we're going to do the two years throughout, there is one section that, um, the final plat, land divisions are kind of a different beast in the way that they work because they're a two-step, three-step process. You have your pre-app. You have your land division decision and then you have your final plat. And I think that the timeline for those is a little bit different, so I don't know if changing that to two years makes sense because recording a final plat is a different process. And I think for the other ones, they're building permits and it makes sense, but for the final plat, I think keeping that one year is, is a standard.
Makes sense.
Just to, just to recommend that.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to approve these edits and changes?
I don't think we do. Do we?
No.
I mean, you got consensus on it. If you're comfortable with it, we'll take it and, and get it.
We're not changing it. We're not doing anything.
Get into a form that we can get to, get it to the council?
Ultimately, they're going to make the decision. If they don't go with us, boy, we're really going to be after them.
So you have to leave early, right?
Yeah, just by eight, 10 or so.
Okay. Well, just feel free, if we're in some heated discussion, we're going to talk a little bit about, um, comprehensive plan. And, um, that can be business from the planning commission, but I want to start out with that because we have Tom here tonight, Councilor Mercer, correct? Is that how you say your name? Is that how you say your name?
Mercer.
And, you know, a lot of stuff has come up with, you know, with all these little projects we've had about affordable housing, and, you know, what we can build and what we can't. And it's kinda funny, you know, during these presentations and all those people we've paid to do all this stuff, it's still kinda, a lot of stuff is really hard to figure out and understand. And it all comes back to the comprehensive plan. So I think, Tom, can you just kinda do a little pitch to us? And then we can, you know, 'cause this is a huge, huge thing to take on, and I wanna pull the commission. But before we do that, if you could just please explain a little bit about what you think we need to do, and how much time and money and so forth do you think it might be?
And can you come up to the microphone so we can hear you? Thank you.
Sorry.
Well, that way it'll be recorded in the background.
So, the comprehensive plan was nineteen eighty-something, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
And my concern is that whether it be codes, or in this case, comprehensive plans, we, the city seems to take a kick the can down the road. We really don't have time for work for this now, so let's just get away with what we can do. And a comprehensive plan, to me, is really the basis of everything. How do you want to run the city? How does our citizens want us to run the city? And getting that going is really important to me, so we have a basis to what we, how we wanna run the city. And where we think, well, we could probably get this done in six months, or we could get this done in a year. The reality seems to be, and the latest input I've gotten, is that it's gonna take two years...
And two hundred thousand dollars.
...to get it done, and spending it two hundred thousand dollars. And my first thought, I think, T-Wiz, two hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna take two years to do this? And what are we really gonna gain out of it? Do we wanna even do this? My belief is, we still wanna do it, that it is an important thing. But I hate like heck to go through and rebuild the city, and then come up with a comprehensive plan after the fact.
Councilor Mercer, could I ask you, how old is our comprehensive plan? When was it first developed? And it's probably not fair to ask you if you have all the timelines memorized, but anything you could give us in terms of how old it is, and how often it's been updated? And when was the last update, maybe?
I haven't got a copy of it. I asked for a comprehensive plan, so I could go back and look at it, to research and come up with that. And I haven't been given a copy yet.
I have one right here.
Nine or something?
Nineteen seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, yeah. I was thinking of eighty-six.
Some updates.
Yeah, the year after Metro was enacted. I think we're a little behind the times.
It has been updated a couple times.
It has, I'm trying to see the dates on this. Nineteen eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven or eighty-eight.
And then, nothing's really bad.
It is bad.
I think we even had an update for something.
Eighty-seven.
I may mention two thousand and eight.
Changed in the last thirty years, so why would the comprehensive plan need to change?
Anyway, my thought is that I hate to keep kicking it down the road. If we need a comprehensive plan, and people believe we need a comprehensive plan, and the planning commission believes we need a comprehensive plan, then just get one started. Because it is gonna take two years to get it done. I'm not, I have a hard time seeing that. Other than the public outreach to get people's input, you know, we don't have a big city here, but there is eleven, twelve thousand people out here that we wouldn't mind getting some input from.
So, parts to think about of the comprehensive plan would be like the downtown areas, the industrial areas. All that stuff is in the comprehensive plan, you know, it's kinda like your bible of how you want your city to look. And I think there's been some updates and patches done to it, off and on.
FYI, I'm just gonna let you know, the last, the goals, objectives, policies, and implementation was last updated in October two thousand and six.
So, there's been some recent, fairly recent stuff done. But I think what we're running up against a lot of times, you know, Tom and I were talking about, is, you know, some of these things come up, like these things are special projects and stuff. And it's kinda like, you run into a lot of stuff that just is contradictory in different parts of the plan. Is that kind of a fair statement?
I believe so. And, as the city puts in the civic center and so on, that is gonna change a lot of the city businesses' thoughts about, T-Wiz, we should be doing this, or we should be doing this. But if we don't even have a comprehensive plan that we are striving to, then it'll make it difficult.
So, what we wanna do tonight is, you know, kinda pull the commission and see what the commission thinks. And then Tom, of course, is gonna pitch it to the city council, and then see if we can come up with some kind of plan. If everybody, it's a huge, huge thing to do, you know, it's almost kinda like, I mean, it's a lot. If you even sat down to read that thing, probably should, like, take a couple weeks off of work and go, go somewhere where there's no telephones or electricity, and try to read it.
Yeah, someplace like Damascus.
Yeah, or boring.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I may have the legislative identifier wrong, but I think it's House Bill two thousand and one that's supposedly gonna redo zoning for cities over ten thousand people. It looks like it's gonna pass through the legislature. It would seem that's gonna have a huge effect on a comprehensive plan away from the industrial parts.
Yeah, it could.
Metro, since this thing was first done, Metro is a much more significant player. And we'd like to think we get to do everything we want to do here, but we're still responsible to fit into the puzzle.
I wonder if Metro...
Where's the, I guess my question, a long story boring here. My question is, where do we start with this? What's the first step we need to take?
Maybe we could ask Metro to do it for us.
There you go.
I do think it's imperative that we have a current, whether you wanna call it a comprehensive plan. I mean, I'm used to using terms like roadmap, where everything goes in phases and syncs together, and you get input from your citizens, all the department heads and staff, and you figure out this plan of how things are gonna move forward. I don't think it needs to be as detailed as the one is currently. But something where we know what's gonna be next, and what project impacts, like, we already know there's gonna be impacts from the civic center being done. And things will start to change, but we also need to know when we maybe need to go, wait a minute, we need to do this first before we do this. And we don't have anything...
Kinda getting things in the proper order.
Order, right.
I've been around this so long, I got some thoughts. I'm sure you do, too, sir.
Yeah, I knew that, Les is our expert here.
First of all, we have to have a comp plan. This isn't a mission statement or something we'd like to have, it's not a concept plan. And it has to be approved by Metro and go through the LCDC. So, we're limited in what we can do, and we have to have our right population projections and population growth so we can figure out where people are gonna go. And so, if we don't know what our density, I'm just being hypothetical, and what our population growth is gonna be, and we're not sure how things are gonna be zoned, boy, we're in a world of hurt. But I think a lot of what's there is still okay. I mean, the basic, the basic comp plan we're living with, yeah, amen, it needs updating, it's way behind the times in a lot of ways. But still, the basic structure of, here's our zoning, here's our areas, here's our UGB hypothetically, all those things are in place. So, I think what we're really talking about is a dramatic upgrade and a dramatic, expensive and time-consuming project to get it there. And my reservation, or my question about that is, there are some things, I believe, that could be done, some minor tweaks that could be done without the whole plan being done. In other words, are there some things we can do without getting, you know, getting, getting into a situation where we're trying to alleviate or make a few changes to our comp plan and to our zoning as well, without crossing the threshold where we're starting to do a major update? See what I'm saying? In other words, we got a little wiggle room here, and we're not even using it. And when we get into this, this is gonna be a monster, I agree. And it's not so much about how we wanna develop as much as how can we develop? So, my thoughts are, we've got a lot of work to do, and at the same time, what we have that's there isn't, we don't have to throw out everything.
What do you think, Tom?
You got about five or six more hours, and we'll get started.
Cause you're gonna pitch to the city council. Well, first of all, does the commission agree, kind of what Les is saying? I mean, we have to start somewhere, I think. We have to do something. And I think that if we're all in agreement that we agree that we need to do something, I think that's a start.
We need an updated request or something, yeah.
Right.
So, the planning commission is agreeing with you, Tom, that we need to do something.
Definitely.
And then, I think, you know, well, Les is an expert.
No, I'm not. I just know more than the average guy.
Have you, in all your years of experience, have you seen any group or city municipality where they're taking a very old document and revising and updating it? And if so, do you have to go through a two-year process? Or can it be...
You're gonna have to, in the long run, you're gonna have to go through the big kahuna, if I can call it that.
Okay.
Malala did it, oh, God, you know, I wanna say it was two years ago, and that's just what my brain works as I'm getting older, it was probably ten years ago.
Yeah.
It felt like two years ago. They tried to do it sort of in-house, sort of ragtag, and candidly, it was a disaster.
That's what they ended up with.
Disaster. So...
So, you need a facilitator that knows what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, one thought I had, if you're gonna, you know, to me, it seems like the first thing you need to do is sort of decide as a community, like, how much do we wanna get in there and tinker with it? Right? Cause you're right, Les, I mean, you could go in and make changes here or there. Your, sort of the fundamentals of what you're doing is not gonna change, right? You're not gonna take some residential section of Gladstone and say, in thirty years, we think this is all gonna be industrial, you know? Let's plan for that. I mean, so, the bones are probably okay, it's just some of it is so dated. You've got inventories that are completely out of date. So, one thought I had was, you could have the council, maybe, decide to appoint a small, I would recommend small, committee that might have, as part of that, somebody you would pay, a land use, you know, consultant.
Kind of a facilitator.
Yeah, to go through it within a timeframe, you know, give them a time, say, go through it, and kinda come back with a recommendation as to, do we just start it over? Do we just go through and look at goals eight and ten? And, you know, I mean, that may be, because I think you're gonna be having this conversation, everyone's gonna have a different opinion on that, you know? Maybe a way to start that would be to get a small group of people together with a paid consultant who does this work, and come up with a recommendation as to how broad of a change should we do?
I think goaltend's housing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's gonna be rising.
I'm not sure where the expense came from, Councilor, but if we have eleven thousand, five hundred people here in Gladstone, that's about eighteen bucks a head, man, woman, and child. And I don't need to tell you that it's a lot lower charges than that to people, bring a lot of people out to complain about it. So, if it's gonna be that much money, there better be a serviceable document when we're all done.
And it probably, I mean, I don't know the numbers, but doing a full bow, I mean, if you, if the, if a decision, whomever makes it ultimately were to go in and say, we just wanna have, we wanna walk out of this with, you know, Gladstone comprehensive plan, you know, twenty-twenty, that's more or less grand-new, right? Soup to nuts. That's a long and expensive endeavor, there's no doubt about that. But if the idea is, maybe we don't need to do that, maybe we should do these things, focus on them, do them, you know, that could be done quicker and cheaper.
Well, and like Commissioner Poole said, there's probably some sections of it that we don't really need to change all that much, other than minor updates. But then there's other, like the wastewater sewer, storm drain, that probably needs major...
Revisions.
Thank you.
Revisions.
You know, and other things about zoning and moving forward.
Right. I know that I brought Damascus a tongue-in-cheek, but the reason that the city ultimately failed is that there was no agreement on the comp plan. Well, part of the problem was, too many other outside hands, in my opinion, were involved, and they were trying to do too much, and we were gonna somehow make Portland or Utopia out of Damascus. And you ended up with two comp plans, and so you had a vote on which comp plan do you want? And they both failed. And so, this is a very important document, and it is an absolute requirement. And it does provide some more clarity to developers or investors. Because again, as you indicated, it's okay if I call you you.
You, 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 I've been called worse.
As one of the Commissioner Smiths indicated, yeah, we're in a situation where a certain amount, we don't wanna be just like everyone else, but if I come to Damascus, and I come to any community, and there's no comp plan, or the comp plan I'm looking at is older than Les Poole, then I'm wondering, you know, gee, how many variances do I have to go through to get something done here? Or how come you folks are talking to me about development, but yet, you know, you've got a, your Tri-Met transportation bus plan is from nineteen seventy-four? So, I think part of what we're also doing is cautiously inviting development and helping to encourage it and steer it in the right way. And again, I mentioned something, and I think it's paramount, that is, we have an expectation for population growth. And there's a certain number put on Gladstone. And while it's up to the city to determine density, still, we're expected to accept a certain number of people. And now you've got the whole situation with the affordable housing and everything that's coming with that. So, and at the same time, it's growing like mad around here. So, we need to act. I think the idea that the city attorney mentioned might be a good way to go. And obviously, the council would make a final decision about this, but, and I hate to suggest it again, but maybe we have another joint meeting at some point, when we get a little farther down the road? We're not ready for that, but I'm saying, you know, we get down the road a couple of months.
Candidly, a plan to get, I am hoping, the planning commission and the council together in a work session sometime in July, and discuss this.
Okay.
And kick around the things you're talking about now with the council, so we can come up with a plan together, a semi-plan, what is the right way to approach this? Now, the things that I'm learning is you, it doesn't appear that you can take, well, we're just gonna work on this, and we're gonna work on this. There is an upgrade plan. If you go into the plan, you in fact have to look at all the steps. Now, some of the steps, like, there's one in there regarding beaches or whatever, uh, ocean beaches.
We don't have any.
Obviously, we're not going to work on that too much.
Yeah.
But we will, i- in doing that, we'll probably still have to document that you don't have to do this. Okay? So, the thing that concerns me, and when we were going through our latest audit review of what we could do with code changes, okay? We're talking about virtually cutting the city up and taking lot sizes and changing everything and doing whatever. And my question was regarding the affordable housing. Whose input have we got? Whose input from the cities do we have? From the citizens? And if, if we don't have that input, what, do we just go and decide on changing all the codes so we can put affordable housing in? And in fact, do we have to do affordable housing? Is the state, because we have a certain size of city, do we have to do affordable housing and change all of our codes? My understanding is that we do not have to do that if that's in fact what the citizens want or don't want.
Is that a question to me?
No. Well, I, if, if I'm wrong, please tell me.
So, it's not that simple, I guess. First of all, the House Bill 2001, if that passes, um, not that this is really good planning, but it will be law, it, it sort of makes the whole conversation about what the comp plan should say about housing somewhat moot. Because what that's going to do is basically say, if you're over 10,000 people, you can't prohibit certain types of housing in certain zones. And there's a whole bunch of other stuff that you have to do. Um, so in that case, to answer your question, if that passes and becomes law, you, with respect to that type of housing, you really don't have a say. No city will. Um, but if it doesn't pass, there's still obligations under Oregon law to consider certain types of housing. And one of those would be affordable housing. So, it's, it's not as easy as just saying, no, we wouldn't have to consider it. If 2001 passes, you're going to be having a lot less opportunity to make a decision about it. That's the way I would put it.
We're back to cell towers in a way. They're going to do them and you've got a little say-so, but-
Exactly.
But really, it's coming and you have to accommodate it. You can't just say, I don't want it.
Right.
It's going to happen anyway.
I think that's, you know, gets into the code, you know, whatever our codes are for certain areas. So, if they say you have to have this in R7, then you have to go through and look at the code. But the comp plan, I think, you know, could reflect, if everything is going to change, like when Metro came, then the comp plan does need to be updated, I think.
Yeah, I, I mean, on the, on this question of what happens with this House bill, you know, I don't think you'd have a decision made before that. You know, that's going to happen here in weeks.
Couple of weeks.
Right? Um, so you'll know that pretty soon. Um, and I think that will, whatever you decide to do with the comp plan, which I think I absolutely agree deserves being addressed. Um, what happens with 2001 is going to affect how you address the comp plan.
Councillor Mercer, uh, between our city attorney and my esteemed colleague here, they seem to be on kind of the same page about taking the comprehensive plan. Here's the stuff we don't need to worry about. It's probably okay. And then making changes. Is that something that's saleable to the city council, in your opinion? As a way to approach it? You know, take the comprehensive plan, small committee, and I'm assuming you were recommending made up with citizens, maybe somebody from city staff on it with them, and an outside facilitator who had already gone through it, said, here's what can stay and here's what we think you need to change, as opposed to rewriting the entire document?
That's my idea, at least getting a sense of what you, you know, what a, a group of people that are, you know, people that live in the city, work in the city, you know, would feel about, you know, based on what we know, do we want to make it a wholesale revision? Is that the way to go? It might be. It might be, you know? I just think you're going to get a lot of different opinion on that, you know? I mean, everybody might have a different take on that, so.
But it seems a place to start.
Well, we're in agreement, Tom. We need to do something. So, I think it's up to you now to get the city council to say what they think.
No, I agree.
Okay.
And we can get together on, you know, and do, like you said, if in July, it sounds like something's already cooking, we can get in a room and talk about it.
Definitely.
I think that's what we need to do. And we get everybody's input. The question you just directed me, does the council want to do it? And at this point, I'm speaking for myself.
Right.
And, uh, I kind of feel that everybody says, well, yeah, we really want to do that. But they, at this point, I'm not sure they really understand how much work it is and the cost of it. And whether they will say, gee, we should put that as a priority. So, I think our discussion in July will get some thought. I, more than anything, just wanted to get everybody thinking about it.
Sure.
And before July, think about it a bit, you know? So, you have some questions or thoughts at that time. But we just work together. The, the, the one thing that I'm still struggling with, to me, doing what was suggested of saying, gee, Wes, we want to work on this and we want to work on this. The heck with the rest of this, this is okay. My understanding is, you still have to look at each part and in fact document and answer to that part.
So, if you're going through a process called periodic review, then you do. Then you have to go through your entire plan. Um, but effectively, no jurisdictions go through periodic review anymore. Um, so you can make, and we've done it in Gladstone. You've made, over the years, a change here, a change there, a change there. It's, it's not the best idea to do. I mean, I'm not suggesting it's a good thing. You know, it's a comprehensive plan, right? It's supposed to be like, let's bring it all in, you know, and get a plan that's going to look forward 20, 30 years. So, ideally, you would go in and sort of look at the whole thing. But I just, and, you know, let's be realistic also about what that undertaking is and just how difficult it is. So, that's all I'm saying. I agree that it, I think, as practice, if, with a document as old as it is, it probably makes sense to just sort of go in and look at everything. Um, because you also don't want to end up with something where you updated this section and suddenly now that's kind of conflicting with this goal. And what do we do about that? I mean, it's, 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 it's probably in need of a wholesale sort of look at and redo, but I just, you know, I'm also aware of just how Herculean that effort can be, so.
One of the comp plans-
Both politically and financially. I mean, you know-
One of the comp plans that, that, um, ended up in court, I think they were trying to expand their growth boundary or something. And I want to say it was Newburgh.
Oh, that's been, that's been on appeal for 20 years?
Yeah, yeah, and the reason I bring it up is that I, I knew someone that was on the planning commission and he said, our comp plan is, so far, we've, we've spent three years herding cats. And we don't want to be herding cats two or three years from now.
It's a terribly frustrating thing.
And in a way, this is sort of like herding cats. And when you get them all together and they're all lined up, all of a sudden, like you're saying, oh, well, one of them is in line with it. What happened to that other one? And, and that was the cat that, that, oh, well, we'll, we'll take it. We got that cat. Okay, they're all on the same page. And then, wait a minute, we lost another one. So, it's really intertwined.
It is.
And, um, and then you have to meet the criteria that comes from, from Metro and, and their sensibilities, um, when you do this. So, I did have one question. Like, aren't we required every 10 years to, to update, like, the transportation plan? Like we did? I mean, or, I'm, I'm just, I'm curious why we aren't, I, don't-
I mean, that's a-
Don't take this wrong, but why aren't we required at some point to update our comp plan?
There are, I mean, there are requirements, it's, it's-
But, but we're just doing little updates or little changes.
Yeah, like a TSP and things like that are generally on, I don't think there's a requirement that you do that every 10 years.
It's probably more about budgeting for it than it is planning.
Well, that's, that's it. I mean, even if there is, that's the problem with what, I'm, I'm, I'll get soapboxy here and I don't, I don't want to do that.
Money is there?
No, that's the problem with what's going to happen with 2001. It's going to create all this new work for all cities and counties to do. They don't have the budgets to do it as it starts. It does nothing to get kind of, it just adds more layers of stuff.
And it doesn't get any new housing when it's vitally needed.
So, you know, the soapbox is that the, the real, the real thing would be, let's, if you want to talk about starting, looking back, um, simplify the program. Start from a more basic level of, so we aren't having communities that are in, you know, a UGB process for 20 years. And you don't have basically a, you know, a process that'll take two years and $200,000 to rewrite a comprehensive plan. I mean, it's, the, the reason it is is just because it's, there's so many layers of things that you've got to address. Um, and, and, yeah, and so that's, but that's, that's the world we live in. I mean, you know, that's, that's wishful thinking. But, yeah, it's, um, it, it ain't easy. It is not easy.
Well, and we're a couple of weeks away from the legislature wrapping up. And so, if, if this bill doesn't pass or gets changed, so be it. One of the, one of the amendments, and I've, I've been tracking it, but there was a lot of angst because this bill applied to any community in the state regardless of the demographics or where it is with 10,000 people. Well, it's kind of an arbitrary number. And, and one of the amendments was, well, we'll make it 25,000 people. Well, in the end, if this bill applies to communities of 25,000 people, then it doesn't apply to Gladstone. If it stays at 10, it doesn't.
But it applies to all Metro jurisdictions.
Okay.
So, you know, yeah, it doesn't matter for you.
We're not going to get out of it, is what you're trying to tell me.
We'll just leave Metro if we don't like it.
I, I think it's important, you know, because we all know that with the new Civic Center, organically, that's going to move down Portland Avenue and really start getting people excited about doing the revitalization. How can we do that without an updated comp plan?
Right.
And be safe to know what we're doing isn't going to have to be undone?
Yeah. And we want to invite development. We know density is going to increase, but we also don't-
We've got like two trains coming through the tunnel in different directions.
Yeah, I totally agree. We need a comp plan.
So, we'll get started on it and see what happens.
I appreciate your time and thoughts and-
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You can be thinking about it and, and hopefully, we can get a big pot together and decide how we want to approach it. Or if we do want to approach it, for that matter.
I think we have to.
And no matter what we do, we, we, I think we certainly need to dig into it and, and-
I believe we need to do something.
Got to do something.
And we agree. The commissioner agrees with you.
All right, thank you.
All right, one last thing for me on the business from the commission is the Trimat thing. Uh, you know, the response from Trimat was, uh, you know, we're going to change our whole bus routes and have to put sidewalks and on Glen Echo and all this stuff. To me, it was like, okay, you're coming down Portland Avenue and you're going, you're going down Abernathy and doing all this stuff down Abernathy. Well, instead of going down Abernathy first, go down Portland Avenue and turn around in the high school parking lot and make the bus stop somewhere over there and then go straight down Portland Avenue and back on Abernathy. Why do you have to go reroute the whole frickin' thing to go down Glen Echo? I, you know, to me, it was like, your explanation was really made sense because you have to change all the bus routes and stuff, but you don't. I think they can turn around in the high school parking lot. It's wide enough there, you know, to go in front of the high school and drop kids off there. Even if they didn't go straight all the way to the community center, it's right across the street almost.
Close enough.
That's what I would like them to look at.
Wasn't there a note from someone, uh, somewhere in some of the paperwork we've gotten, someone from Trimat agreed to come to a city planning commission?
Yeah, I'd like that person to come.
Just to give, yeah, I just wanted to give you an update that I have been in contact with Trimat and they will be at your July 16th meeting.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
I like what you said, though. That should be proposed to them.
Well, just think about that.
Yeah.
You know, when you drive down there, because I know that, you know, the schools looking, have ways to get more kids in that school, in the high school. And if they could take the bus and get dropped right there, I think that they would get a few.
That's how I got to school in Seattle was, they didn't have city buses. Up in Seattle, it's all public transportation. You got a token.
Right.
And that's how you got to high school. And it pulled right up in front of West Seattle High School. I took the bus, it's the public transportation every day.
Anybody else have anything for, um, business?
Do not.
I do not.
Just a reminder, they're going to close our wonderful pedestrian bridge soon. I mentioned that at a meeting the other day. And just get the word out.
Yeah.
We, uh-
They have a big sign right there, too.
People are coming here at summertime, they, you know-
It's a bad time to close it.
We've got the parks, we've got everything. And, um, the more people know that that's going to be under construction, the fewer people are going to be disappointed.
That's a great trail over there on the other side, too. To go, you know, you can come up behind that new development up there. The problem is getting back across the, you know, you have to go up Maglophone. You have to go through all that maze to get up there. If we had the trolley bridge down here, that would be the greatest walk to go, you know, in that circle around there.
Oh, yeah.
And back down Portland Avenue.
Yeah.
But we just need to make sure that the public and our friends know that-
We've tried to put it on the website and our social media so people are aware of that.
It was in the city newsletter all day, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, anybody?
And they're putting up, part of what they're doing, by the way, is not only earthquakeing and strengthening the, the piers at this end of the bridge, they've already done the other side, but they're putting a larger pipe on there.
Yeah.
Wes is, so water-
More volume.
You know, they put a bigger pipe on there? Because people are coming here, so we better do something about our comp plan.
All right.
With that, I'll make a motion.
Uh, hang on just one moment, Chair. Um, I wanted to let you guys know, you've been asking about land use training. Um, I have been in contact with the League of Oregon Cities and it looks like they are going to be sponsoring some land use training. However, it is during the day is the only time that they have available. They're currently looking at August 20th, which is a Tuesday. It would be from 9:00 to 4:00 at the Gladstone Senior Center. And as soon as I have any more information, I will follow up with the planning commission.
Thank you.
All right, good. Thank you.
That's a good bet.
That's the third Tuesday of the month.
It's on your, it would be on the same day. So, you may be able to go to that. But, yeah, we'll be in touch regarding that land use planning or training.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will it be recorded by any chance for those who have to work?
I will find out. I, I, it's just been proposed at this point, but that's what they're looking at. And I can follow up with details.
Okay, thank you very much.
Les made a motion or is it going to?
I was going to make a motion that we adjourn the planning commission meeting.
I second that motion.
Made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.